It's a great time to get a great deal on a new car when you get approved for an auto loan from PennFed. Our powered by true car rates are as low as 1.39% APR on new vehicles. Finance for a longer term to lower your monthly bill, plus take up to 60 days to schedule your first payment. Join PennFed and together we'll keep you moving forward. Anyone can apply. Visit pennfed.org/auto or call 1-800-247-5626. To receive any advertised product, you must become a member of PennFed insured by NCUA.
Guys, can you hold on for one quick second? I have a three-year-old about to take his pants off and run into the room.
It's a good thing we switched away from Skype.
On this episode of Transition Virginia, the specialist of special sessions claws its way to a very special conclusion. What was it all about? We'll dig into it with House Majority Whip Alfonso Lopez.
It was an historic session, but there's so much more that we do need to be doing.
And Senator Jennifer Boiskow.
Sometimes we have to compromise to not get everything that we want all at once.
Cops and COVID, House versus Senate, and how the politics of 2020 will play out during the 2021 General Assembly session. All that and so much more on this episode of Transition Virginia. Welcome to Transition Virginia, the podcast that examines the transition of power from Republican to Democrat. My name is Michael Pope.
And I'm Thomas Bowman. Today on the podcast, we'll wrap up Virginia's special session on COVID, the cops and coronavirus edition of the General Assembly. The General Assembly introduced 270 bills and passed 56 of them. We're going to walk through what happened, what didn't happen, and what happens next.
And help us understand all of that. We're joined by a member of the Virginia House of Delegates and a member of the Virginia State Senate. From the House, we're joined by the Democratic Whip. He represents Northern Virginia localities of Arlington and Fairfax County. This is his third appearance on the podcast. Alfonso Lopez, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me, guys. I really appreciate it.
We're also joined by a senator from the other side of the Capitol. She serves as the Sergeant-at-Arms for the Senate Democratic Caucus, and her district includes Fairfax and Loudoun Counties, also in Northern Virginia. Senator Jennifer Boiskow, thanks for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm really looking forward to our conversation today.
Before we get into the special session, in the intro there, we introduced you, Senator, as the Sergeant-at-Arms of the caucus. I'm curious, what exactly does that mean you have to beat up on Scott Servell when he gets too loud and obnoxious?
Absolutely. I have to keep the order in our caucus meetings.
Is that difficult to do?
Some days it is, but you know, I'm a mom and I've gotten a lot of practice over the years, so I handle it pretty well.
Good. So the special session, Thomas was going through the numbers there. That's 270 bills were introduced, 56 of them passed and are on their way to the governor. Many of those are duplicates, of course, but still, there's like, you know, about four dozen bills or so that we're talking about there. Delegate Lopez, let's start with you. What happened in this special session?
In all, I think 29 pieces of legislation that were part of the Democratic, House Democratic Caucus's priorities were passed by both the House and the Senate. And we advanced a budget that funds our urgent measures that passed during the special session while also adjusting the diminished revenue forecast caused by COVID-19's recession and also safeguarding our AAA bond rating. So overall, I mean, we prioritized support for Virginians who've been suffering physically and economically due to COVID-19, and also addressed the inequities in the Commonwealth, especially in the areas of police and criminal justice reform.
So let's back up real quick. What did the General Assembly perceive its mandate to be? And what was the goal? Senator Boiskow, I'll throw it to you.
Certainly. So we knew going, you know, out of, out of the session, once we saw that COVID-19 was really impacting our budget, that we were going to have to come back in for a special session to address that, to make sure that we were being fiscally responsible and addressing the urgent needs of our constituents. We also, in June, when the very horrible murder of George Floyd took place and Breonna Taylor, criminal justice reform became an issue that everybody was faced with and could no longer ignore. And we incorporated that as part of the top priority. And it was amazing because we finally passed all of our criminal justice reform bills on what would have been George Floyd's 47th birthday, which just happened to be a coincidence, but was really powerful to a lot of us.
I want to talk about something that did not happen, which was legislation on expungements. Now, the House passed a version of expungements that was automatic expungements for lots of misdemeanors, even some felonies. The Senate had a version of that. It was not automatic. It was way more limited to mainly first-time offenders. And this went into conference committee, but I don't think has emerged, right? So I think it just sort of went into a black hole. Delegate Lopez, what happened with expungement reform? And is that going to come back again next year?
Well, you know, it'll definitely be coming back next year. It's still actually in negotiations between Senator Deeds and Majority Leader Herring, who's also the Chair of the Courts of Justice Committee on the House side. So what we have right now is the, the House bill included over 100 crimes and was the result of a study of over five months. It was not a rushed process. The Deeds bill has four crimes: underage drinking, underage possession of cigarettes and marijuana, and a fake ID. His bill also required a pardon from the governor before you can petition for expulsion. And, and here's the deal, we all know that Virginia's governors have a very low rate of pardons. I think Northam had 48, McCullough had 189, McDonald had 52, Kane had 108, Gilmore had nine, Wilder had four. And so there was a very big disconnect between the original House and the, and the original Senate versions of the expungement bill. But I am, I am happy that they're still having a conversation and there still might be an opportunity to do something. If not now, definitely during the General Assembly session in January.
Senator Boiskow, when we look at expungements and how the Senate was not willing to go as far as the House was on expungements, when we look at qualified immunity, which passed the House and did not make it through the committee and the Senate, there is this perception that the Senate is sort of dragging along here and sort of stopping the, the progress that, from the perspective of the House that they want to make. What's your perspective on the Senate's role in all of these issues?
Yeah, thank you, Michael. So I serve on the Judiciary Committee and I was one of the six members of the Criminal Justice Reform Subcommittee ad hoc that was appointed to deal with all these bills over the summer. We spent five months really going deeply into a number of initiatives. Any one of them in any other year would have been seen as a major, major victory, and we ended up getting quite a few of them. On the expungement and on the qualified immunity, there were details, these were very, very complex bills, where we did not have full vetting of all the challenges that were faced in getting a comprehensive agreement on both of those. It is my understanding and my expectation that we will be working on those throughout the rest of this calendar year, so that we are ready in January to fully vet and, and get something passed on both of those initiatives. That's certainly my intention. These are important bills, but considering the load of work that we had on policing reform, on earned sentence credit, on the pretextual, on the jury sentencing, I mean, we got some major, major stuff. And I, I feel like it was a huge progress and victory. And I, it's a process, though. We're going to continue to work to make sure that we get everything right.
Yeah. If I can just piggyback on something the Senator said, um, you know, the, the amount of incredibly forward-looking, positive policing and criminal justice reform legislation passed and, and sent to the governor is, really makes us one of the leaders in the country. I mean, other states have tried to tackle some of these issues and have failed miserably. We have mandating the use of, we're talking about excessive force. We've got Markus Alert system. We've got banning sexual relations between officers and arrestees. We've got decertification of law enforcement officers who have terminated or resigned for violation of the law, strengthening the Senate review panels, eliminating certain vehicle equipment offenses as pretextual stops, demilitarization of police departments, you know, it just goes on and on. My bill empowering the Attorney General to conduct pattern or practice investigations of police forces, finally, that appear to be violating constitutional rights, including unlawful discrimination or excessive force, you know, expanding the definition of hate crimes to include false 911 calls or what reports to law enforcement, prohibiting no-knock shirts warrants, strengthening the assessments and review of prior law enforcement employment records required before hiring law enforcement officers, and then diversifying the Department of Criminal Justice Services Committee on Training, standardizing enhancing train, training by criminal justice academies, establishing required in-service training standards for law enforcement officers, increasing earned sentence credits. I mean, these are huge steps forward. And, and as to allude to something the Senator said earlier, in years past, when the Republicans were in, in charge of the House and Senate, just one of these bills would have, would have been a huge amount of press and, and, and press conferences and, and branding and, and marketing around this amazing step forward. We've passed dozens of them this session. And, and I think it's a, the kind of thing that moves Virginia into a leadership spot for the entire country.
So how would you characterize this session? Do you believe, Delegate Lopez, the result meets the expectations and the needs of the moment? Where did we meet expectations and needs? And where do we have room to grow?
Well, there's always ways to be better. I mean, we are always searching for that more perfect union. We're always searching for ways to improve legislation. We're always searching for ways to improve public policy in Virginia. And so honestly, nothing is ever complete. Nothing is ever done. There's always better, more that we can do, that we can be doing better. And so, yes, we have done a great deal in terms of, of a lot of these criminal justice reform bills, but we can improve them. And this is not something where we can simply snap our fingers and say, yes, it's going to be perfect. This is a negotiated process as well. And so I'm very excited about what we're going to do in the coming session and to address civil immunity, to address expungement issues, or possibly even before then. And then also some pieces of other bills that we did pass that maybe we, they're not as good as they could be. And so we have a lot of opportunities ahead of us.
On the issue of potentially not as good as they could be, one bill that did make it out of the General Assembly and is now on the governor's desk is a bill that was introduced by Senator Boiskow on earned sentence credits. Now, Senator, your original bill had a way for people who were in prisons to earn increased credits that would allow them to get out earlier. But as the bill worked its way through the process, there was lots of testimony from people that wanted exemptions for this kind of crime and exemptions for that kind of crime. And in its final version, ended up sort of applying to people who were guilty of, you know, drugs or fraud or theft, but not sex offenses or violent offenses. Talk a little bit about that process. And do you feel like there's room to improve on that from your perspective next year?
Absolutely. I mean, that was, it was really an amazing process. And we set up a work group with this because we did, as you mentioned, ended up narrowing it quite a bit and putting a lot of exclusions on in order to pass it. And that's what sometimes you have to do to, to get everybody to vote for it. We have put a work group together that's going to look at the data so that this is a data-driven process in the future as we hopefully will come back to this. I definitely intend to come back and continue working on this in the future. I got to know a lot of the families through this process these past five months and hearing stories from people's loved ones and from people who are incarcerated themselves. We know that people can do better and can have a second chance. And I, I think it's important that we get those people with very measured and thoughtful data-driven programs to do just that. We don't need to be among the highest incarcerated states in the nation.
Quick follow-up question on that, Senator. So you mentioned that there were lots of exclusions that were added to the bill in order to get it through the process and on its way to the governor's desk. Which of those exemptions do you find might be problematic and that you want to come back around to next year?
Yeah. So, I mean, there are lots of them. So prostitution is one of them. Things around adults and sex trafficking is one, that there are some nonviolent offenses.
So let's use prostitution as an example. So if you're currently in prison and you're serving time on prostitution, you would not be eligible for this newly created program where you get expanded sentence credits and you get out earlier. You just, that program wouldn't apply to you, basically. Is that kind of how that would work? But you feel like that is one of the exclusions that you'd like to come back around to, that and the others that you've mentioned, that you'd like to come back around to so that they could be part of this program?
I mean, originally, what I had hoped were things that are crimes against children, especially sex crimes against children, rape, violent murder. Obviously, any murder is violent, but the most heinous, you know, the, the capital murder, class one felonies, the things that a person would be dangerous to be able to get back out. We ended up, because people did not have a comfort level, because of course, you know, people with victims' concerns came into the picture and we had to make sure that we listened to them, things got tightened up. And I think there were, there were fears of campaign brochures, that someone was going to let someone out who did something terrible. But again, I'm going to go back to that 18-year-old kid who does something stupid, who is involved in something that was not the, the main perpetrator or something, but who was an innocent bystander. They're still considered in this category. And they didn't intend to, you know, manslaughter is in this. There are lots of, of categories in this bill that tie people up and, and do not give them the opportunity. As the law stands right now, any incarcerated person can qualify for 4.5 days per 30 days to get a sentence credit reduced. There is no exception. And so what I found frustrating is now we're picking winners and losers based on what their sentences are in a way that wasn't necessarily the best way possible, I think. But again, this is a step in the right direction. It is landmark. We have not seen prison reform in over 25 years. Again, I'm so proud that we were able to get this far. And it is, again, a step in the right direction. We, in Virginia, we do not typically do the whole thing at once. We do step by step by step, which I think is prudent and reasonable, and make sure that we're taking measured, measured actions so that we're being responsible to the citizens and the residents of Virginia.
One thing that we've seen emerge as a perception of how the General Assembly works is that the House is bold and progressive and the Senate is sort of dragging its heels and pushing back on things. We saw that, you know, perhaps with expungement, that's somewhat at a stalemate right now. We're going to talk about that later, I suppose. We saw that with qualified immunity passed the House. It did not get through the Senate. But on the other side of that, though, is this issue of assault on police and getting rid of the mandatory minimum, which has been used in cases where people like drop a cup of water on the shoes of someone, or famously in the case where an onion ring was thrown at an officer. Now, this is a bill that passed the Senate, but it did not get through the House. Delegate Lopez, what happened there?
Um, all I can say is that, you know, not unlike what Senator Boiskow was talking about before about, you know, the difficulty of getting things through the Senate and getting people to agree, we had a very significant, you know, I hate this word, but robust conversations about how far the caucus was willing to go. And although I supported Servell's bill on the House side and, and was prepared to vote for it, we did not have enough, I believe, to get it across the finish line.
So Delegate Lopez, can you take us into one of these negotiations on an issue that came up? Who were the players and their positions? And how did we get to that final product? And maybe can you explain it in a way that takes us into our next segment where we talk about what happens next with governors' bills and recommendations?
You know, what's interesting when people talk about, say, the Joe Morrissey bill regarding jury sentencing, that conversation was not about the policy. The House Democratic Caucus was fully invested in the policy. The problem was that there were only two states in the entire country, Virginia and Kentucky, that still did it this antiquated way. And I was incredibly proud of these robust conversations that the caucus had, where we got past the issue of whether or not this was a, a cost issue and the speculative nature of like, because we, because it's impossible to quantify because of the nature of prosecutorial discretion, how much of this is going to cost. And so, you know, it's not a cost issue. And I said that in caucus a few times. The argument that the bill is going to lead to an increase in the number of jury trials is completely speculative. What we're talking about here is fundamental justice. And if 48 other states have figured this out, we need to as well. And what I was very proud of is how everyone came together, had these conversations on the House side, as Senator Boiskow said, in real time at the end of the session. And I think came down on the side of the angels, came down on the side of fundamental justice.
Delegate Lopez, Senator Boiskow, we're going to take a quick break. And when we come back, we're going to discuss what happens next with the bills before the governor.
A little flexibility can go a long way. By refinancing your newer used auto loan with PennFed, you can lower your monthly payments for more flexibility in your budget. You can even schedule your first payment for up to 60 days from the date of your refinance. Calculate how much you could save at pennfed.org/autorefi or call 1-800-247-5626 to apply. Membership is open to everyone. To receive any advertised product, you must become a member of PennFed insured by NCUA.
Hey, you. Yes, you. You're listening to Transition Virginia right now, and you're probably a fan of the podcast, right? Well, then rate and review like Trevor Sutherland.
One star. The only time I listen is when I'm on.
Hmm, that's not really what I was thinking. Well, how about this review from Richard Kraus?
This piece of shit podcast, I wouldn't even rate one star.
Come on, listeners. I know you can do better than that. Hit the pause button right now and give us a quick review. And we're back on Transition Virginia. We're joined by Delegate Alfonso Lopez of Arlington and Senator Jennifer Boiskow of Carndon. We want to look ahead now to what happens next with the special session. Now, you guys have sent these 50-something bills over to the governor. He gets to amend them and send them back to you, right? What do we expect from the governor? What would you two like to see from the governor in terms of amendments, potential amendments? Delegate Lopez, we'll start with you.
Sure. Well, the, the governor has seven days after the bill is communicated him, as long as we have an adjourned CNADA. And so we should be getting his amendments and line item vetoes rather, rather soon. Now, do I expect tweaks? Do I expect there to be some changes? Um, you know, yes, I, I think there is some road funding that snuck in that might be addressed by the, the governor. And I can't give him specifics, but to reallocate some road funding, that instead of road, it could go to things like social services, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It could go to education funding. It could go to broadband, expanding broadband and efforts that were unalotted because of the downturn.
Okay, so Delegate Lopez wants the governor to potentially reallocate some money that had gone to road funding to other things. Senator Boiskow, what kind of tweaks would you like to see from the governor?
Yeah, you know, more money for unemployment. I think that's probably my top priority. And would like to see is make sure that we are really shoring that account up and getting it from the federal government, because that's where it should be coming from, from the CARES Act money. And our social services groups, you know, making sure that they have the resources with the CARES money to make sure that they've got what they need at our local levels, because they're the ones who are really on the front lines, making those day-to-day decisions to help residents. Those are probably my two concerns. And then, of course, if we have more money to come back and help deploy more broadband.
So it sounds like COVID created a lot of expensive competing priorities. And the revenue deficits or shortfalls are really the fundamental question is how do we pay for all the things that we absolutely have to pay for, right? So did anybody explore innovative ways to raise revenue, maybe increasing a VAT tax or, or anything to relieve the pressure on the budget and the more pressure that will come when the stock market falls in the future?
I, I think that's part of our conversation for the regular session. There are several folks, both Senator, Senators and House members, talking about this. And, but, you know, everything's on the table. Would I say that this is definitely going to happen? No. Do I think there, we need to preserve and protect middle income and, and poorer folks? When it comes to taxes? Yes. Do I think that we need to right-size how we do some of the corporate taxes in the, in the Commonwealth? Yes. But this is for future discussions, I think, when we have more time going into the regular session.
I want to return to the issue of expungements. I was speaking to an advocate who was thinking this issue was kind of over with and that it had gone into a conference committee. And the advocate I was speaking to didn't expect it to emerge from the conference committee. He thought this issue was sort of done for the special session and was already sort of preparing for the next General Assembly session. I got the sense, though, that Delegate Lopez, you think it might not be over with yet. Do you think that we can see progress with Sharnell Herring and Cree Deeds making some sort of compromise on expungements?
Uh, I know that they are both speaking with each other. And I know when you're talking about Cree Deeds and Sharnell Herring, that they are two of our best and that they can, if anybody can accomplish something and get stuff moving forward, it's those two.
Well, Senator Boiskow, what are your thoughts there? The House had a very expansive version that allowed expungement for lots of misdemeanors, even some felonies. It was automatic. Then you had this tension with the Senate that didn't necessarily like the automatic approach and wanted it much more limited in terms of what kind of crimes might be wrapped up in expungements. What's your view of expungement? And do you think that there might be some sort of compromise during the special session?
I think there definitely is. In fact, so my understanding is that on the last day that we were, you know, on Friday, there were ongoing conversations all afternoon and into the evening. And it just was a time, we, we ran out of time, but we did not adjourn. And we do have the opportunity to go back in to finish this up, which is my understanding of what we're going to do. Everybody in the House and the Senate wants to see a deal on this. We all understand that this is an important piece of our criminal justice reform package. And I think we're probably going to see some sort of an effort where the House and Senate Judiciary Committee members get together to work on this through the rest of the year to get it into the posture that we will all feel comfortable. Again, sometimes we have to compromise to not get everything that we want all at once to get something moving forward. And I assume that's going to be one of those things. This is a very complex issue, but it's an important one. And I, you know, I believe that we will find common ground to get, to get it moving in the right direction. Can I go back to the, to the funding issue about the, the budget? Just a quick second.
By all means.
We did have a budget item that talked about tobacco products and putting a tax on heated tobacco products, $2.25 per stick beginning January 2021 as part of our revenue generation.
That would be amazing.
All right. Well, let's take a quick break. And we've already kind of teased the third segment. When we come back, we're going to talk about the issues we might see emerging for the 2021 session.
Michael, do you ever wish you could go back and check the transcripts of our episode?
A transcript? Do you mean like the Nixon tapes?
Yeah. Now you can find the smoking gun of Virginia politics at transitionvirginia.com. Just click the link for notes and you'll see audio and now transcripts.
Well, you can search for key words like dirty trick or onion ring.
We're building our blog to feature even more great content over the coming months.
You can find it all at transitionvirginia.com. And we're back on Transition Virginia. We want to get out the crystal ball and peer into the future and get a sense of the issues that might emerge for the 2021 session. Now, hold on to your hats, everyone. The 2021 session is 12 weeks away. Can we believe it? 12 weeks away. Now, this is the time of year, actually, when lawmakers and advocates and journalists are preparing for the upcoming General Assembly session and trying to get a sense of what issues are going to emerge and what topics are going to be in the bills. Senator Boiskow, let's start with you. What do you think the big issues that we're going to see in 2021 are?
You know, I, I, the things that I care a whole lot about are dealing with families and economic opportunity. I think equal pay for equal work. I've been carrying that bill for a number of years and I plan to reintroduce it. We still are not on parity, even though in the federal law, it says that equal pay should be the law of the land. It's still not. And there are some, some things that we can do around that. I think paid family and medical leave is another issue that certainly has shown itself to be a necessity. We shouldn't have to make a decision between keeping our jobs and taking care of a loved one. I'll be carrying that again for the third time. And I expect that we will pick up the criminal justice issues that we've already discussed around expungement and qualified immunity. My hope is that we do not all have 55 bills each, but really focus in on a few really important things to address this coming year.
Just piggybacking on, I, I, those are, you know, it's definitely things I'm hearing about and would hardly agree with. The other things we're hearing about are The other things we're hearing about are because of, you know, typically the caboose bill, which is the odd year budget, is sort of a less fraught kind of discussion. I think because of the nature of COVID-19, because of the shortfall and because of the instability in the economy, that you will see a lot of time go into the budget and the caboose bill this coming regular session. I also know that the environmental community and the renewable energy community is doing a lot of work on clean vehicles, electric vehicles, and making that a priority this coming General Assembly session and as well as what Jennifer mentioned about criminal justice reform bills. And then also, I think that there's still much more we could be doing in terms of cleaning up some of the immigration bills that we're working on. Jennifer and I worked very closely on things like the Dream Act in Virginia for in-state tuition for undocumented and DACA students. The idea is that I think some, if it's possible that we can get some extra coverage in that for some students to fall into some gaps in terms of their immigration status, like asylum seekers and so on and so forth. And then also some funding to advertise that the in-state tuition opportunities are available to students through school systems and also community college and public colleges and universities.
I think it's important to highlight some of the great stuff that we did this past General Assembly session. I mean, the Dream Act, which we had been working on for years, expanding who can have a driver's license in Virginia. We passed the ERA. We, you know, increased minimum wage, collective bargaining. We passed landmark environmental legislation. We repealed the trap laws on abortion providers. I mean, we did some really big, heavy lifts last year that I'm so proud of and so pleased that, you know, I was able to have an opportunity to be a part of those. And I know that the Democrats in the House and the Senate really used, we used our time to really make meaningful change. And I think that's something that we have to continue to celebrate and to continue to talk about because this was a landmark 2020 in Virginia. We listen to the people and elections really do matter.
Yeah, it was an historic session, but there's so much more that we do need to be doing. And so I think you'll see in each of those areas that there are specific things that we need to follow up on. You know, there's still conversations that we have in terms of labor, even though we did so much in terms of addressing the labor community. But in terms of us being a right-to-work state, what that means, how does that evolve? How does that change?
Well, Delegate Lopez, since you brought up Virginia's right-to-work law, I know that there's lots of people in the labor community that would like to see that overturned. Can we expect some conversation in 2021 about getting rid of Virginia's right-to-work law?
I think what's going to happen is that, just like the House Democratic Caucus has had these incredibly deep and nuanced conversations about public policy for this special session, that you'll see us be having the same kind of conversations going forward. And I can't give you any detail beyond that right now, but that's where we stand.
Now, when both of you were outlining what we can expect for 2021, one word that I did not hear anybody mention is the word parole. Now, Virginia in the 1990s famously got rid of its parole system and we've got the truth in sentencing law. Can we expect any conversation on parole reform? Senator Boischoe, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I think we definitely will see some action. I think that is another one of the really complex and in-depth studies needed to make sure that we are looking at all aspects of it. I don't necessarily expect that we're going to see a bill on it, but I do believe that there's going to be an in-depth work on it. And so I guess we'll have to tune in to see, to see where we are in January.
Delegate Lopez, would you like to see Virginia reinstitute a system of parole?
Yes.
Can we expect that conversation in 2021?
It's not my call. It's going to be a call of the caucus. And so leadership will reach work with the caucus on getting to the weeds on where the caucus is and where we feel we should be moving as a group.
All right, well, if you have comments or questions about what you just heard, or maybe you only want to tell us what you think about the show, write an email and send it to us at transitionvapodcast@gmail.com so we can read it on the air. Subscribe to Transition Virginia anywhere pods are cast. Follow the Transition team on Twitter @transitionva and find us on the web at transitionvirginia.com. Don't forget to like and subscribe so you can enjoy our next episode of Transition Virginia.
Regina King for Cadillac Escalade.
When people ask, Regina, do you like to compete? I say, bring it on. Those are the moments that drive you to achieve more. And when you win, you keep reaching higher. To me, that's what the Cadillac Escalade represents. It's always evolving in technology, in design, everything. Because success isn't the end, it's just the first step to what comes next.
The 2021 Cadillac Escalade never stop arriving. Regina King for Cadillac Escalade.
When people ask, Regina, do you like to compete? I say, bring it on. Those are the moments that drive you to achieve more. And when you win, you keep reaching higher. To me, that's what the Cadillac Escalade represents. It's always evolving in technology, in design, everything. Because success isn't the end, it's just the first step to what comes next.
The 2021 Cadillac Escalade never stop arriving.